All right. Good evening. Welcome to the City Council special meeting this Monday evening, July 28th. I now call this meeting to order. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Certainly Mayor Newsom, Councilmember Diaz Nash.
Here.
Councilmembers Sveko Goditski.
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine.
Here.
And Mayor Newsom.
Here. We're excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the city clerk. If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each item. We'll begin tonight's special meeting with five closed session items. Item one, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. Item two, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. Item three, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. Item four, conference with labor negotiators and item five, conference with labor negotiators. Now before we convene to closed session, city clerk, do we have any requests to public speak on these items?
Mayor Newsom, we have received no requests to speak in chambers and I see no hands raised in Zoom for closed session.
And we will convene to closed session.
One second.
Study session, item six, city council rules and procedures update. We'll have a presentation from city clerk Martin McTigard. Welcome.
Um, through the mayor. The camera is very blurry. We can just look at that for a second.
We'll send a note to our team.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, city council. Martin McTigard, the city clerk for the city of San Mateo. Thank you for your time this evening. I have a brief presentation for you tonight on the topic of city council's rules and procedures. For a quick bit of background on this, from July 20th, 2015, the city council adopted what were then referred to as the guidelines, and these were created to serve as a comprehensive reference for how the council conducts its business. And they were replaced by a number of previously adopted resolutions. They have evolved into what we now know as the council rules and procedures. Over the past decade, these rules and procedures have been amended periodically, primarily to ensure compliance with changes to state and federal law, and in response to real world experience from the council, city staff, and the public. Over the past year, staff has conducted a more detailed review and documented several areas where clarification or additional direction from council will be helpful. As for next steps, tonight is a study session, so we're just looking for feedback from the council on these proposed amendments. No action is being taken. And if council is supportive of the proposed amendments, those will be brought back for adoption at a future meeting under consent calendar. Additionally, council may choose to direct staff to explore other potential amendments, which would be brought back for discussion at a later date. The first section I wanted to focus on is the chapter three, duties and events. What we're proposing is a attendance framework where events, council are often receive invitations to events where Brown Act considerations cause some limitations as it relates to the number of council members that can attend. To avoid Brown Act considerations, we limit those attendance to two council members. And this is something that we manage internally through our event tracker as a process for confirming who on council chooses to attend the event. Staff is seeking clarity and consistency and recommending a framework that gives priority attendance to first, the mayor, or the deputy mayor if the mayor is unavailable. And second, the council liaison to the most relevant board commission or policy area related to that event. This approach will help provide staff with clear direction as it relates to requests for responses and reservations, with the ultimate goal being to provide a more equitable attendance process for meetings. Our next proposed amendment relates to public participation, and this is again coming back to some of the issues that we have identified in attempting to administer the rules and procedures for public participation, particularly as it relates to council meetings. One of the key focus areas here is presentation materials policy. And the goal here is just to ensure fairness and improve meeting logistics. So the council will be aware that we have seen an uptick as it relates to requests for video presentations and other presentation materials during council meetings. We have at times had challenged with late submissions of content where we have not had an opportunity to review. What we're proposing is some guidelines both for staff and the public as it relates to how to submit those materials for display during public meetings. We're recommending a submission deadline of at least one business day prior to the council meeting. This gives us an opportunity to review the content to make sure it's relevant to the city's subject matter jurisdiction or the subject of the agenda item. We're also recommending equal treatment for both individual speakers and organized groups, so that allows everyone to follow the same set of expectations. Historically, what we have been doing is having only organized presentations be able to provide video materials during meetings, and that basically comes down to the time limits associated. If someone wants to display a video, the video lasts longer than the amount of time they're allocated to speak during public comment, for example. So in providing equal treatment for both speak individual speakers and organized presentations, what we're recommending is that regardless of whether your individual or organized presentation, the content that will be displayed must be displayed within the allotted speaking time. So if you have a four-minute video, for example, but you're allotted a three-minute speaking time, you would have the video would stop playing at three minutes, essentially. The other portion of this chapter that we're looking to amend relates to organized presentations. And again, going back to what the original intention is for organized presentations, and it's to allow groups to be able to present content in a more coordinated fashion, rather than having individuals come up and say, you know, introducing themselves, what organization they're part of. They have an opportunity to have a more extended discussion, which is five-minute presentations. We're looking to provide a little bit more guidance to staff as it relates to how to administer those, as it relates to qualification for an organized presentation. What we're recommending is that the requester must either be physically or virtually present in the meeting. So someone just needs to be in the meeting and needs to be clearly identifiable. City staff would not require them to identify themselves either. We just need to be able to confirm that they're in the meeting. We don't need their name. So if someone comes up to the dais, for example, wants to do a virtual organized presentation, we just need to confirm that they're here, or virtually, we would be able to administer that we see there's someone. They don't need to provide their name. They can use a screen name or some other name if that's necessary, but staff would not be requiring them to submit their names when they're submitting these requests. As it relates to eligibility, there would be no expectation that the city would require all members of the group to be in attendance. We wouldn't need any verification of the representatives attending the group. We would basically treat it as we currently do treat organized presentations. There's no formal qualification for qualifying for organized presentation either. Moving on to meeting agendas, so this slide just kind of addresses what our current practice is. Rules and procedures have a very specific order in which discussion items must be heard, beginning with public hearing, followed by old business and then new business. So that's what our process has been. We have been coordinating agendas along those lines. However, in practice, we have seen some items, old business and new businesses, business items that attract significant public interest. And what the way that we have managed that to date is during the meeting, and you'll see this later during tonight's regular meeting, where staff proposes where staff proposes an amendment to the order due to public interest, requests that approval from the council. The amendment that we're proposing authorizes the city manager to make those determinations before the agenda packet is published. That is to note, based on public input, the amount of public comment that we're getting on a particular agenda item, we can anticipate that we're getting increased interest in the item. However, just to note that that would not remove the council's authority during the meeting to have any oversight over the agenda order. It would just be simply adding city manager to restructure prior to packet publication. This next piece as it relates to cost control, so currently, council members may incur pre-authorized expenses for events, conferences, or seminars that are listed in the approved travel and train policy. However, if a desired expense isn't specifically listed, it goes to the full council for approval, which can create some delays, but that, that has been our process. And the city clerk's office handles logistics, such as registration, travel, lodging, for all of those requests. The proposed change introduces standardized allocation model for each council member. So each council member would be provided with an equal individual allocation to be used for attendance, registration fees, and official business expenses. This model is informed by best practices in other cities, such as the City of Mountain View, uses a similar approach. Ultimately, the goal is to prepare promoting fairness and accountability, cost control, to make sure that council members have equal access to that budget. One of the key factors I wanted to note is that the clerk's office will be overseeing tracking of the expenses incurred, and the council would be provided with routine updates as it relates to what budget has been used so far, and allow the council to have full transparency over how much budget they have left. And just in terms of the allocations, this would be tied to the city's annual budget adoption process. Moving on to legislative. So on May 19, 2025, staff presented a legislative briefing to the city council, which highlighted the need for structured, ongoing process to manage the legislative advocacy efforts, with the goal to establish a clear framework for developing a legislative platform that reflects the council's priorities, and that ultimately can guide timely responses to key policy issues at the state and federal level. The proposed process includes key several components. The legislative committee would serve essentially, as it does now, in an advisory capacity, helping to review and refine proposed positions. Any adoption modification would require full council approval, and ensuring alignment with council, with city policy direction. Once adopted, the platform would provide staff with the ability to quickly respond to urgent or high-impact legislation, substantially in alignment with the platform, without needing to return to the full council or the legislative committee each time, which is our current process. So this ultimately allows for a more agile and effective advocacy process for the city. We're also proposing a minor amendment within this portion of the rules and procedures, and that is to update language to kind of more accurately reflect current practice. The rules and procedures do allow some role for the advisory bodies to bring items before the legislative committee. However, in practice, that has not occurred. And in consultation with our legislative advocacy firm, they have not seen this to be common practice. So we're recommending that this be limited to just council and city manager. Moving on to boards and commissions, I just wanted to note that we're not specifically proposing any amendments tonight, but wanted to just open it for discussion, given we just went through our rules and procedures as it relates to the spring recruitment for 2025 boards and commissions. But did want to just offer some clarification as it relates to the existing language. We did hear some feedback from the most recent experience that, you know, there was every incumbent needed to reapply for their position, and there may have been some uncertainty as it relates to what that might look like in the future. So I'll just read the language as it's written currently. It says states that the default is that currently serving commissioners will each be interviewed for reappointment. However, if it is determined that a commissioner's performance is outstanding or that other factors necessitate keeping them in their role, then an automatic reappointment can occur with a majority vote or majority consensus of the city council. So in short, this policy does provide for automatic reappointment, but with explicit council consensus, and that is typically based on things like performance in the seat or continuity needs. So just to kind of reiterate what the process will look like and what we'll go through during 2026's annual recruitment process. The first step will be the clerk's office will reach out to all of the commissioners who are eligible to serve another term, verify their interest in continued service. And then when we form the appointment subcommittees, this will be, this information will be brought back to the full council. When those are established, the council can at that time provide direction to staff. If any seats require reappointment, that would be the time to let staff know that, you know, we, we want to do a full recruitment for all seats, or there are specific seats that may warrant for different circumstances. And then following our typical process, the appointment subcommittee typically made up of two members of the council will conduct interviews, all eligible applicants. And afterwards, a recommendation is provided for the council for approval. And that's brought forward under a consent calendar item at a future meeting. So that, and, oh, excuse me, we, just a brief note in terms of that process. So the appointment subcommittee was originally intended to be designed as to reduce some of the inefficiencies that we were seeing as it relates to the interview process. During this last cycle, we had, as was mentioned, all seats were up for interview, even those that had incumbents within the seat. And that did lead to some additional staff commitment, staff resources, and council resources. I know that each of you spent a lot of nights in City Hall doing interviews. So just a flag for future reference, there's no proposed change to the, the language and the rules and procedures, but it may be something the council may be interested in considering as it relates to future recruitment processes, that the goal essentially was to have two council members serve on the appointment subcommittees. And that's, it has been somewhat common for more than two to sit on the subcommittee. So it's not a requirement by any means, but just maybe something to think about as it relates to staff time and council time. And that is the, our presentation. Just to summarize, in terms of next steps, staff is requesting direction from council on the following proposed amendments, the council member attendance framework, presentation materials, organized presentation policy, authorizing city manager to adjust agenda order, the cost control policy for individual council members, and the legislative committee amendments to enable a legislative platform. And as was mentioned at the outset, if council has any further interest in exploring other areas within the rules and procedures, we're happy to receive direction on that at this time. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, for a great presentation. Before we go to the council, let's open it up to see if there's any requests for public comment. Give him one second to cue you. Three minutes.
Thanks, thanks, Honorable Counsel, for letting me speak on this topic. I feel a little lonely tonight. There are three things that struck me. First of all, on the organized presentation piece, I think that we should tread lightly here. It's always struck me that sometimes the organized presentation piece seems to favor people like developers or property owners or other people. And sometimes it's used, I think, to give them an unfair advantage in terms of the amount of time that's allocated. When you have private citizens who only have a minute to try and pull their thoughts together and present, and somebody else gets to put together an entire slideshow, I wouldn't be opposed to no materials, no videos, nothing. Even though later tonight, you're going to see some videos, I think, maybe from somebody who I agree with. But I, I think that that should be submitted for the public record, and everybody should have, have the same amount of time to speak. And I think you should be looking for opportunities to hear more of the voice of the residents. Sometimes things get heated, and it makes for long nights, but we should be looking for opportunities to hear from people. And I think the organized presentations sometimes get away with, away from that. In terms of the agenda package, I was really dismayed a few weeks ago when there was a very dense, very complicated slide deck about safety on our streets that residents didn't have a chance to review in order to comment on it in front of you. And I don't think that should ever happen again. I think when you have something that's that important, and you're tasking city staff or others, outside groups, to come in and give you a very dense, very data-filled presentation, we, the public, should have a chance to review that. So when the agenda gets finalized, that's when that package should be available to everybody, unless it's a dire emergency of some sort. I really was struck with how unfair it was to expect residents to digest all that and comment on it in the precious little time we give them to do that with that presentation. So I hope you will think about that in this, in this context as well. Finally, I would also like to say that on the appointment process, I was really glad to see this year that we really required everybody to make their case again for another year. Unfortunately, I think it cost us some voices that we really wanted to continue to hear in coming years on some of the commissions that are pretty important. But I was glad to see that you changed the process to require everybody to make their case again and no automatic reappointments. There should never be an automatic anything in, in, in the public business. So those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving to our virtual environment, where our next speaker will be Dave C. Dave, please go ahead and unmute your mic.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I trust you can hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, this is Honorable Mayor and City Council members. I'm speaking on behalf of Ethics Samatale, as you know, California nonprofit public benefit corporation. Our complete comments have been sent to you. We want to recognize your efforts that, which have resulted in improvements on how our city leaders govern themselves. Adopting a set of rules that include a code of conduct which is enforceable and contains consequences for violations is a long-sought accomplishment. This will be your legacy of this city council. I want to address a few items. But one of them, I've now become a little bit confused because what the agenda package showed for public participation in regards to group presentations is what the city clerk has described as much different from what I read. If I misread it, then, 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 you know, bad on me. We were going to tell you that we objected to the idea of identification of having all members present, having them all listed, et cetera, et cetera, as it appears on the agenda package. Therefore, I am simply going to say that you do need to make it fair and equitable. We realize there's been issues with it, but as a corporation, if we have a authorized representative, we believe that's all we should need to, need to show you. Lots of people, lots of groups are in this situation. HLC, Samaritan House, Silicon Valley Bike Coalition, Ethics Samatale, obviously, and HAC. Expect all members to be present or ID, we, we thought, you know, it was, was ridiculous. And how could all this be verified? I'm not going to say anything more on that, because it looks like you, you have all of my comments, and it looks like it's already been dealt with. Secondly, the conflicts of interest rules, which have not changed. The current rules advises, says that if the city attorney advises and provides an opinion that a council member commissioner has a conflict of interest, that individual can say, no, I don't, and that's it. They don't have to act as if they have a conflict of interest. Now, obviously, there's state laws in the financial stuff and all, but we're talking about a very broad range of what could be a conflict of interest. We believe that the city, the city attorney states that there is a conflict of interest, then it should be held. If the council member or commissioner wants to appeal the city attorney's finding, a process to appeal that
Thank you.
before city council should be created.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Dave. Your time is up. Mayor Newsom, that concludes public comment.
Well, with that, we will close public comment and open it up to questions and conversation from the council. Does anyone want to go first? Councilmember Swarko Kadiki.
Thank you. I'll give Martin a second to get settled. Okay. Just a clarifying question. Can you share what the current process is for when city staff has the presentations from different departments before council meetings?
So the presentations that we receive for council meetings, the, we do set internal targets and internal deadlines for production of those, and those generally align with the publication of the packet. So our agenda packets for both special meetings and regular meetings, we publish those on the Thursday prior to the meeting. Stit law for regular meetings requires 72 hours' notice, which would technically be just the Friday before council meetings on a Monday. So we try to get ahead of that, and we publish our materials on the Thursday. And we internally, for the presentation materials that you receive, we aim to get those through internal approval processes on the Thursday as well.
Okay, great. And then going to your comments about the council appropriation of funds for travel, budget, et cetera. Can you share a little bit more about how we're defining expenditures? So for example, as you all know, Martin and I recently took a trip to Kentucky to visit Abu. And right now, you know, basically, the way that we fund the unit is not through the city. It actually comes from people donating to nonprofits, or community members organizing care packages, or our department head sending care packages. So for example, could that be something that council members, you know, could allocate a set of expenses to go towards the unit or other projects like that, that the city already has relationships with, or no?
So I guess maybe I can just draw everyone's attention to, this is Chapter Nine, Financial Matters. You should each have a copy in front of you. This is page 23. And I'll just maybe highlight as it relates to authorized expenses. So this just speaks to more of, these are the default items that city council doesn't need to receive requests for approval on regularly. So authorized expenses include Section 2A, you're looking at 2A1C as it relates to attending educational seminars designed to improve officials' skill and information levels. D is participating in local, regional, state, national organizations whose activities affect the city's interest. So just to highlight these, these are the, these are the pre-prescribed council business that the council doesn't need to approve each time someone wants to go to Progress Seminar, for example. What falls outside of that is the unanticipated request. So we don't do regular trips to Fort Campbell for our 101st Airborne that's more upon request. So something like that comes back to the council for full approval. We let you know if we have sufficient funds to cover those costs, or if an appropriation is needed, for example. So those are the, the more one-off expenses, things like traveling to our sister city of Toyanaka would be another example of we're coming back to the council for required funds. But as far as council contributions to nonprofits or other organizations, that would probably not fall within this process, that would probably fall more in alignment with how the council provides contributions to other agencies. One example would be the San Mateo Sister City Association. The council provides an annual contribution of $15,000 for that. So council has given So council has given direction and other avenues for those types of contributions, but it most likely wouldn't live within this process, if that makes sense.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Appreciate the detailed answer there, Martin. Two quick little things on commissions. It would be great ahead of time for recruitment if we could get a list of the commissioners and their expiring terms. I know it's on the website, but you know, as this comes up, just having that ahead of time, you know, sent to the council. I also did just want to throw out, if there's an opportunity for the council to review the interview questions and application questions, like maybe before going into the commission interviews, we kind of get in front of that. I know we do that before the interview process, but just having like a quick sync.
In advance.
So those are all my comments. Thank you. Good job. Sorry, one last thing. Happy birthday.
Oh, happy birthday. All right, we'll go to the other side. Councilmember Diaz Nash.
And happy San Francisco Marathon. There we go. Lots of good things happening.
Marathon man.
That's right. So yeah, I think this is, this is great. Really appreciate the effort. Couple of points of clarification. I know in terms of distribution of council duties and events, chapter three, I use, and I think we all use, event tracker to try and, and I'm sure you do, to say who's going where. I think there is an issue, though, with the fact that a lot of the community neighborhood meetings that we go to, whether it's the bike lanes or electrify or the school buses or whatever, don't make it on the event calendar. And I know that that is, you know, that each department has a, here's my checklist of everything I have to do before I bring something to council. I'm hoping that making sure that the city clerk's office is aware of these events so that you can put them on the event tracker, that should be just in stone, that that request. Because where I find we have the most issue is we all decide we want to go, we need to go hear something, whatever the issue is. It's, there's going to be one neighborhood meeting about it. It's going to be in one place and all five of us want to go. And so the city attorney may say, you really can't do that because there are potential Brown Act violations, but there's no recording of the meeting. So we can't understand what happened. And so number one, getting those events on the event tracker, I think would help. And then number two, I would appreciate more clarification on how do we deal with those types of events? And I think what we've done in the past is that we've wound up in different corners of the room and only one person from the council has spoken or asked questions. And I think that's been more how we've tried to accommodate that. And I don't know if there's a better way to do it, but I, you know, I don't, there've been times when I've felt very frustrated because I can't go to a session that I really want to go to to learn. And so I just throw that out there, something to think about, number ones, but definitely to get departments to get those events on event tracker, certainly. Number two, I think the public comment request about sharing decks ahead of time, I don't know how we do it, but I think that's great for the public and also for us. I know that it's, a lot of times those decks are the last minute they get done, and I appreciate all the difficulty. But when there is a complex subject, the more time we have to review things and that the public has to review things, I totally support. I appreciate the fact that you clarified that the organized presentations, people can be in-person or virtual, because not everybody can be in this room, and that's, that's very important. Let's see, then, in terms of the cost allocations, I really appreciate your desire to get us tracking on the expenses, because I may go to more local events than one of my colleagues, but another one of my colleagues might do things like go to Fort Campbell or go to Sacramento that I don't. And so they're representing all of us. And whether that turns into different categories, I don't know, but just understanding what's there. And I think also, we need to get reminded that we shouldn't say yes to something unless we have a pretty good thought that we will be attending. And obviously, things can change, but you know, if it's something that, we don't want to waste the money and we don't want to get rid of the budget serendipitously without thinking. So I would, myself included, we should be continually reminded of that. And then, you know, the proposal you had to give us each the same amount of money, if one council member, for whatever reason, doesn't use their allocation and another council member is just really into it, like our former colleague, Rich Hedges, went to every meeting everywhere in the entire world all the time. So I bet he probably would have gone over his allocation, not because he was, he was very serious about it. So how do we deal with that, just reality? And then in terms of appointment process for boards and commissions, you and I spoke about this, but one of the things I found, I was very much in favor of, of making sure everybody re-appeals, because I do agree with the public comment that no one should just get automatic reappointment. But what I found, and I was involved in the library board reappointment interviews, was the majority of the people on the library board had served less than one term, some of them less than six months. And so I felt that was, and maybe what you're suggesting, that we go through each one of the appointments that may or may not happen, that we should be able to say, you know what, that person has served less than six months, we don't think it's necessary to interview them unless there's something that, you know, we really feel like they're not attending the meetings or there's some reason why they should be. So I think it's particularly for people who've served less than six months, we should be erring on the side of saying they should be able to get a reappointment and then they get one term and maybe six months. So if that makes sense to you. And is there anything that I haven't given you feedback on? Because I don't see the list.
Let me just pull up the slide real quickly.
So event attendance, presentations. Oh, absolutely. The city manager should be able to adjust the agenda order. Or, you know, we come in and suddenly there are 100 people here for an issue, we can do it on the, on the spot. Cost control and legislative committee amendments. Yes, I agree with those amendments.
Perfect. And thank you for that, Councilmember Diaz Nash. And maybe this, this kind of comes back to Councilmember Swirko Kaditski's point regarding, you know, if we have a, in terms of the utilization of council budget, under the proposed framework, we would not have like, the trip to Fort Campbell to visit Abu wouldn't be held against the individual council members' individual allocation, because that would be considered as a separate council-approved expense. It wouldn't be part of the existing pre-approved council expenses. So that, if that makes sense, it would be a separate budget allocation for, for the special events.
And just thinking of things like council cities meetings in Sacramento or Long Beach, if somebody attends that, that would be planned.
Right.
But someone who attends that is going to be spending a lot more of the budget than someone who goes to a council cities dinner in Atherton. So that's why I think just getting the tracking would be really helpful.
Yep, absolutely. And then just as it relates to the topic on, so yes, tracking of expenses, we'd be providing council with regular report outs on how much of the budget has been used thus far, and the allocation can be adjusted, and we can return to council for additional requests for additional funds if that's required.
Great. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, through the mayor. I have, I think, one question. Martin, you spoke a bit about staff resources related to this recruitment this year for board and commission members. And I was just curious if you could say a little more, perhaps if needed, about, like, as an example, was there, is there a significant difference in staff time of work between interviews with a subcommittee of two council members as opposed to ones with more?
Certainly. So as it relates to the appointment subcommittees, where there are three, so essentially a majority of the council that converts it into what is essentially a city council special meeting. So just administratively, there's a couple of additional steps that need to be performed. Council meetings require that we have all materials that's made available to the council also is required by state law to be provided to the public as well. So all of the applications that we receive need to be compiled, redacted, and uploaded to our legislative platform or legislative tool. So that's just an example of one step, but there's a couple of more administrative steps that need to be completed as it relates to preparation for a council meeting as it relates to a subcommittee with just two members.
I see. I appreciate that. And I think I'll just go to comments. I have a suggestion, but I'll start by saying I feel like I basically approve of staff recommendation A through E. And just with regard to board and commissions, I agree with Councilmember Swirko Kaditski's comments relating to making sure we have a list of the vacancies when we're considering, like in advance of the, of the recruitment that we are about to undergo. And I think I had a suggestion about maybe just making sure we have an agenda item that's more than a consent item in advance of next year's recruitment, maybe a study session. And we could, we could accomplish a number of tasks during that item, one of which would be council members confirming the subcommittees they would like to be on, which is what we already did in the consent item. But in addition, we could review the list of commissioners with expiring terms and/or any other vacancies we're aware of as we prepare for the recruitment drive. And at that time, council could take the opportunity to bring up any commissioner they feel should be reappointed for an extenuating circumstance. And then to Councilmember Swirko Kaditski's comments about reviewing the interview questions, I, I would agree, I think it would be nice to have an opportunity to do that. And I don't know if it would make sense to also do that in that, in this, this item, or if it might be better to have something like a council subcommittee work with the clerk's office offline in between now and next year. But, you know, I would like for us to take a look at interview questions, potentially the application questions as well, as I know that's often come up when we have an item with the clerk's office related to the demography studies we've been doing. And consider maybe the process just a bit more broadly. As an example, the San Mateo County has a rubric that it uses when evaluating candidates for each of its commissions that I think might be interesting to consider to keep us organized when we're in the subcommittees and potentially standardize or have us with, with more of a uniform approach, you know, kind of regardless of how many are in the subcommittee, et cetera. So I would, I would like to suggest that, please. And I hope other council members might be interested in at least a study session item and potentially a, a subcommittee if, if maybe staff feels it's in, in, in needed.
Certainly. I could maybe just speak to the, the interview questions. So that's something we can certainly share with the appointment subcommittees once they're established. So well in advance of the interviews, we could provide, in the past, what we have done is just internally, so usually it's the staff liaison will review the questions from the prior interviews and propose any changes or make any amendments. But we, prior to this last year where we required individuals who were eligible to serve another term to reapply and opened up every seat, the automatic appointment process was more standard, was more common. And I think what we're seeing is an adjustment to a new process. So I think it's, it is reasonable for the appointment subcommittees to receive an advanced copy of the interview questions and have an opportunity to provide input on those. And as it relates to the discussion item, as it relates to the establishment of appointment subcommittees, that as opposed to a consent calendar item, that, that also seems like it would be a reasonable ask. We can simply bring that as a discussion item, listing exactly what council has requested so far, is here's the current list of whose terms are expiring, who's interested in continuing to serve, and council can provide direction at that time and turn it into a discussion item.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember from the NIs. Sorry. Good night.
I just want, sorry, do we need to, it's seven o'clock, do we need to? Okay.
We'll extend till 7:10?
Yeah. Okay. Just want to thank the city clerk's team and yourself for the hard work you put into this. I know that even with the reappointment process for the commissioners, that was a bulk of unexpected work. So you guys handled that super gracefully, and I want to thank you very much for how you handle that. A couple of questions or a couple of comments. Just given the tenor of how we reappointed or reappointed the commissioners, would it make sense to remove the automatic reappointment process language from the guides?
So what, what we're presenting tonight is a clarification of the existing language that specifies that there's essentially a mechanism in place that allows the council some flexibility. So if a majority of the council during our next recruitment cycle decides, you know, we don't want to do reappointments for anyone, that, that is totally up to the council at that time. So the current language was designed with a level of flexibility built in so that you're not going to have to follow, you're not going to follow the same process every time. It may be, it may differ depending on the circumstance.
Okay. And as we're modifying that, or I know what you're proposing, but it does, for, I fully anticipated when we went through the reappointment process that the, the commissions that are, let's say, most prominent, planning and SNI, would have the most council members who wanted to serve on those commissions, and that's what happened. Is there any way to maybe make an exception or to cater language saying that those two particular commissions, commissions can have more than one, more than two council members on it at any given time? Because it does seem like it's the exception to the rule and it's additional work, but if we can build that language in, maybe we don't have to do the additional steps that you had, you had to take?
So we, you could include language, but council could also provide direction tonight that for future boards and commissions, that that be just part of our process and that could be part of the feedback that we've received tonight is that if there's a majority of council feeling that way, that we, for the high interest or the higher profile boards and commissions, that those don't receive a majority of council attendance, but we would, we'd look for, to the council for.
Okay. With regards to how we assign which, how many or which council members get assigned to, to go to an event, can we add, when it comes to commissioner issuer, can we also add district? Because we're split into districts now, and there are some events that are around certain neighborhoods that we represent. And I do think that it's important to notate, like if something's happening in North Central, we all love North Central, but I think priority should go to me because I am the, the representative for that area. Is that something we could consider?
If there's council interest in that, we could certainly begin an amendment to that.
I have, I have lots of nodding heads here. Great. And then just the last item, which is not a, not a modification of the proposals you've made, but just a reminder, I, I, we've had, Danielle and I, Councilmember Swirko Kaditski and I joined the council in December, and we've had six council meetings go past 10:30 almost to 11 o'clock. And I just want to call attention to chapter six, letter F, which is keeping our comments clear, concise, and on topic, which respects our colleagues, publics, and the staff's time. We are a, we are a council who likes to talk, so I just want to, in absence of actually proposing time limits for how long council members can speak on an item, I just want to remind our council that we are long-winded and maybe we don't have to be.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, let's see. I am in favor of pretty much everything A through E. A couple of comments. One, I think individual presentations, it, it seems to me like if having an individual slideshow is almost a non-starter. I am in favor of pretty much everything A through E. A couple of comments. One, I think individual presentations, it, it seems to me like having an individual slideshow is almost a non-starter from a time perspective. You know, generally, when there's topics like that, it's rare that there's not, you know, a bunch of people talking on it, which means generally, it's only a one or two-minute public comment. And I just kind of am wondering if it even makes sense to have a slideshow at that point. I mean, the, the public do have the opportunity to send us that slideshow ahead of time and reference it during their public comment. So I'm, I'm a little, you know, gray on the idea of, do we let them queue up a slide for one minute? I mean, it'll take, unfortunately, it takes a minute just to queue up a slideshow for a minute or two minutes. And so in that sense, I'm a little, a little iffy on that. And likewise, with the group presentations, like organized presentations, I, I question why we wouldn't at least require one of the people to be in attendance just because if, if it's important enough that they want a five minutes of our time, I'd like to make sure that they have somebody who's local enough to kind of weigh in. So I don't know if that kind of puts a fly in your soup as to what you've proposed, but those are two kind of thoughts I have that are a little contrarian to what you've suggested.
Maybe I could just clarify to that point. So the language that's currently in the proposed amendments does say that for, to qualify for an organized presentation, the participants need to be present in the meeting. So we would need to have.
I thought you were saying they didn't have to be present. So that's, I'm great with that.
And that could be both in-person and virtual. We would just, the clerk's office would just, or the individual clerk in the meeting would just need to know who is part of that presentation. We would administer that.
And those presentations would have to be to us a certain amount of time before the meeting as opposed to, and, and I would think that even if we did go forward with letting a public person, an individual show a comment, that again, we'd have to have some guardrails in it. If they, they can't give you the slideshow a minute before they're presenting, it needs to be something that you've vetted and made sure is appropriate.
Correct. We're suggesting one business day.
Okay. I, I guess I'm okay with that, then. That's great. I support the flexibility of letting the city manager or the city clerk change the meeting agenda, meaning doing new before old, if there's enough public interest for that. I think the cost controls are all fair. I think the only other thought would be, I'd love to see on our, our city tracker, if, if that event is considered brown acted. Meaning, because we've had some things in the past where it's like, oh wait, you can't all go to that. And then we've had, oh no, you can all go to that. So it'd be helpful to have it so that the city attorney has said, yeah, that's a brown acted event. Two is all get to go. And that way, we could plan with that as well. So that's just my other thought there.
Certainly. And we can, we can commit to, as far as it relates to making both Councilmember Diaz Nash's point, as it relates to making sure events end up on the event tracker. So everyone has a way of them, but also we can do a better job of making sure that it's clear which are.
Extremely valid points from the whole council. So I think if we can incorporate all that, that's great. Everything else, I'm in support of. I have no other comments. Do you have everything you need from us? Yes.
I just wanted to make a comment about Nicole's comments. Thank you for your feedback. Just on commissions and who gets to interview candidates, I just would like flexibility that council members can choose to opt in or not. I'm not sure I agree that we should limit to two, because I think those decisions are important.
I, I don't, my, that was not what I, I just want to make sure that that was not what I motioned or commented on. I just think that, not even requiring two, but I think that our most prominent commissions should have built-in option of three. Because I think all, I think council members are always going to want to do those.
Yeah. I also just, I interview people for a living. Just to remove bias, like, I think an odd number would be better for interviewing. But yeah, okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Well, we do have a representative of staff as well. So even when there's two, there's always a third interviewer. But they can't vote. You're right. Yep. But it still brings in the dynamic of not two people. But yes, I agree with all those things. Do you have everything you need from us?
I do. Thank you so much.
Thank you for a great presentation. We are going to adjourn for five minutes and then we will reconvene for general meeting. Thank you.